McGrath Smith. No, okay. Murphy Robeletti?
Here.
I almost called Councilor McGivern because I keep hearing his name, his voice in the background. I'm having deja vu over here. Acasio?
Yeah.
Israel Rivera?
Here.
Jenny Rivera?
Here.
Sullivan?
Here.
Bacon?
Here.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Justice for all.
God bless America.
And the city of Boyle and all its people.
And the city councils.
Great, thank you. Yes, so Councilor McGrath Smith is away this week. And everyone else, Councilor Bacon is zooming in, so before we get started, I'm going to motion to take a roll call vote that for the purposes of this meeting would be applicable to all motions to remove an item from the table, place items on the table, package items, open or close a public hearing, or suspend the rolls unless there is an objection.
So moved, second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. And Jenny was picked. Councilor Rivera, welcome back. We're glad to see you, and this is how we reward you. And yes, we did see Councilor McGivern, this eve, former Councilor McGivern this evening. I asked him if he wanted to run the meeting, and he said no, so I tried, guys. You're stuck with me. So item number one is a public hearing. And I believe we do have Vincent O'Connell from the Holyoke Gas and Electric.
I made a motion to take one off the table to open up the public hearing.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to take item one off the, or for the public hearing. Petition for pole and wire locations. The Holyoke Gas and Electric Department requests permission to locate a line of wires, cables, poles, and fixtures. And this is for one streetlight pole between, or one streetlight hole between property line of 31 O'Connor Ave and 33 O'Connor Ave. So Vincent from the Gas and Electric is here, and I will also afterwards see if there's anyone from the public here to speak on this topic. Vincent?
Good evening, council members. This has been O'Connell, Holyoke Gas and Electric Engineering. We have a request, I believe that came in from the council for this streetlight pole on O'Connor Ave. All the butters within, I believe, a 300-foot buffer have been contacted, and we have not received any response in regards to not setting the pole for the streetlight. And, and that's where we're at right now.
Okay, thank you. I'm gonna pause and see if any other councilors have questions first. Councilor Givner?
Thank you, Madam President. I don't really have any questions, I just wanted to mention that this was initiated by a resident after there were several break-ins in that corner. There have been over the past couple of years, and more recently, there were several within a few months. And that's just a really dark corner there, so, and there's like bushes that come almost right up to the street, so this has been specifically by request because it's just so dark in that corner.
Thank you, Councilor. Anyone else? And is there anyone from the public here to speak on this specific topic tonight? Not seeing anyone on Zoom either.
Motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to close the public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? So moved.
Motion to approve the petition?
Second.
Motion has been made to approve the petition? And...
Roll call vote.
The clerk will call the roll. Thank you. Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Granny?
Yes.
Crane?
Yes.
Murphy Robeletti?
Yes.
Acasio?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Unanimous vote. Great, with that, you've passed. Thank you, Vincent. All right, moving forward, up next is public comment. So we do have someone in the audience signed up this evening. Brenda Sullivan? Hi Brenda. Brenda, just state your name and address into the record, and you have, we'll give you 90 seconds, a minute and a half, and I'll keep track of time, and I'll let you know when you're at a minute, okay?
Okay, so I won't breathe or make eye contact.
Totally fine, we will not take it personally. All right, whenever you're ready, Brenda.
Good evening, City Councilor, President Murphy Robeletti, and all of the council members. I thank you for the opportunity to speak in front of you. My name is Brenda Sullivan, and I'm a proud employee of the O'Connell Company subsidiary, Appleton Corporation. Some of you may or may not know, Appleton Corporation manages numerous elderly housing communities here in Holyoke, and we have the reputation of being the best independent senior housing provider in Western Mass. One of the communities that I manage is Elmwood Towers, which is located at 485 South Street. Elmwood consists of 151 units with a total of 183 residents. Of those 183 residents, we have 10 over the age of 90, 17 between 85 and 90 years old, 31 between 80 and 85, 57 between 70 and 80 years old, and 68 residents under the age of 70. Of our 183 residents, 59 have mobility issues.
You're at one minute. You have 30 seconds, go ahead.
That are not limited to. I'm skipping over. As you are aware, South Street is a major street in Holyoke. Many of our residents utilize a pedestrian walkway to cross the street to get to the three stores that they utilize. Unfortunately, that light, traffic light has been down since December. Unfortunately more, our resident Roberto Sanchez was struck and killed by a car in February 12th. That light remains down. As one of my responsibilities as a property manager is to provide a safe and decent housing for our residents. Unfortunately, the safe part I can't provide at the moment, but you can.
You're at time.
I respectfully request that you consider spending the $11,000 needed to replace that traffic crossing system.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Councilor Granny?
I move to allow Ms. Sullivan to speak for another minute.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved.
Thank you. Of the 183 residents, 71 have vehicles, and of those 71, 10 of those vehicles are not being used by residents that just haven't yet have the ability to pick, to stop driving. The businesses that they utilize is Mello's Groceries, where they purchase their daily scrap tickets and foods that are needed, Paper Cut, Paper City Cuts, where our males get their haircuts, and more importantly, Tiano's Restaurant, which is a Hispanic restaurant that through the Western Mass Senior Services Grant provides free lunch to seniors on every Wednesday. Our residents across the street to these businesses rely on safety, and that traffic leg being down has taken away that safety. I have spoken to the mayor's office, and they've told me that it's $11,000 to replace the light because the parts are obsolete. I've also been informed that the mayor has filed a Chapter 90 with the Finance Committee that was denied, and he plans on reapplying in July, which is three months from now. And I've also been informed by Mr. Bartlett that he has filed a late file order with the Finance Committee, but does not think that it will be on the agenda for the next meeting. So again, and my closing statement is, I can't fix this problem, but you guys can. We don't want another death or another accident, and I beg you to find the money to replace the traffic crossing system. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for the additional time.
Thank you. Anyone on Zoom? I don't see any hands. Okay, great. Moving on to communications. Item number two, from Mayor Joshua Garcia, a letter reappointing Mark Cutting, 40 Briarwood, to Hedic. He will serve a three-year term expiring June 30th, 2027. Councilor Bartley?
Madam President, could we suspend the rolls, take two, three, four, five as a package? They're all reappointments, so I'd like to further suspend the rules to have each of the appointees reappointed.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Great, thank you. So item two, I just read. Item three is a letter reappointing Dorothea McNeil to serve as the Republican Member of the Board of Registered Voters. Item four is reappointing Elizabeth Rodriguez of 193 Brown Ave to the Historic Commission. Number five is a letter reappointing Christopher Gothier of 1 Taylor Street to the Historic Commission. So the motion has been made and seconded to approve the reappointments of these four individuals. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Thank you. Item six, from City Clerk McGee and Jeffrey Anderson Burgos, the meeting minutes from April 2nd.
Be received?
Admitted.
Motion to, motion made and seconded to receive and adopt. Any corrections or anything? As always, thank you both. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved.
Madam President, can we suspend and take seven and 34 together as a package? Because they go together.
Motion has been made and seconded to take item seven and 34 as a package. Hold on one second. So item seven is the, is filed by Councilor Bartley, minutes of the Development Government Relations Meeting, and item 34 is filed by Councilor Bartley. OPED, please provide status on 245 High Street. Building sits across from High Street from City Hall, and the windows are boarded with plywood. The minutes from DGR meeting are attached as a communication. Refer to OPED, Mayor, and the Legal Department?
So that's, that's my motion, but also send it to DGR for a hearing, but I just want to, if I can get a second, I just want to go into discussion for a second.
Sure.
Second.
Thank you. So we'll have a larger discussion in DGR, I'm sure. I put the minutes there just so you, everybody has a sense of the history, where we are with this. There is a reverter on that deed. It's been sitting there, I just looked out the window, Madam President, there are a dozen plywood boarded up there. Now, I didn't think that was allowed, first off. Second off, there's another piece of plywood that's blown open. So the, the second floor is wide open for, for the elements. On, on the bottom floor, it's, it's filled with graffiti. And, and this is from the Holyoke Health Center, wanted it, said that they were gonna do something with it, and look, voila, nine years later, directly across from City Hall. It's a disgrace. So I could have called them, but, you know, he bounces around Holyoke all the time. He, he had to know that at some point somebody was gonna file an order on it.
Sure, so that sounds like...
And so that's, that's where I, I hope, I hope our friends in Ward 1, I think that's Ward 1, is that Ward 1, Jenny? Yeah, okay, yeah. I hope our friends in Ward 1 see that, and, and we can maybe have a long talk with Jay and, maybe, maybe come to something, a little better accommodation than that.
Sure. Councilor Devine?
Minutes of DGR meeting, is that a current one?
It looks like it was from...
It was the minute we voted on it.
I know, but I wasn't here.
2015.
No, I know you weren't.
2015?
Yep.
Yeah, 9/115.
Thank you.
Anyone, oh, sorry, Councilor Sullivan? And then Councilor Rivera?
Councilor Bartley's absolutely right, the ordinance requires these windows to have polycarbonate, not plywood.
This is true. Thank you. Councilor Rivera?
Yeah, thanks for bringing this up, because actually, somebody was asking me about the building the other day because they were thinking about purchasing it, and I didn't even know that, like, they were like, who owns the building? Because I would like to buy it myself. And I'm like, okay, now that you say this, helps out a lot, because it looks like nobody owns it right now, I'll be honest with you.
Councilor Bartley?
Through the chair, it is owned, right, so it's Holyoke Health Center. There's a property deed. You, you know, that, we, we put it all here on, you just saw what, what was said in the minutes, and the order. And we had a, I mean, we had a ready, willing, able buyer, picked up her five grand. And there it is. So hopefully, somebody, and that was Attorney Moriarty's office, Neil Moriarty. It was, it's a really nice looking building, it's next to a, a couple of great businesses.
Yeah, should be a good discussion.
I think it will be.
Great. Thanks, everyone. So motion was made and seconded to refer to DGR?
And all the others.
And the Law Department, the mayor's office, and someone else.
But can you throw Board of Health on there too, please?
Board of Health as well?
All the plywood, they should be...
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
So moved. Great. Item eight, from the Holyoke Development Authority, minutes from November 15th, January 17th, and February 21st.
Motion to receive.
Motion to receive. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Item nine from Hedic, minutes, February 29th meeting.
Motion to receive.
Second.
All those in favor? And number 10, the Historic Commission meeting, minutes from January 8th and December 12th.
Motion, second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okie doke, so heading into petitions. Item 11 is petition from various Holyoke residents, petition regarding the CPA rate change.
A motion to receive the petition and set the meeting for our May 7th City Council meeting, please, at 7:00 PM.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to accept the petition and set a hearing for the May 7th meeting? All those in, any discussion? Councilor Jordane?
Yeah, just briefly, Madam President, I, I believe in, we currently have the petition itself in finance, so it was gonna be my recommendation, probably at the next finance meeting.
I don't think it's in finance, I think we just got it, but we can put it in finance.
Oh, no, I, excuse me, not the petition, I meant the actual ballot question.
Right.
That's sitting in finance currently, so I'm gonna propose that the Finance Committee vote that out so that we can get that back, and then the, the residents, we have to, under the charter, afford them an opportunity for a meeting, and this will be what is being set up right now. So this way, if we bring it out of committee for the next meeting on the 7th of May, we'd be able to have that meeting, have the vote, and we all move forward.
Second.
So that, that's gonna be, and I'm...
Any other discussion? Councilor Devine?
Just so I understand, May 7th would be a regular meeting of the City Council?
Correct.
Okay, and Finance Committee is supposed to meet before then?
We have two meetings, Madam Chair, as you know.
Once tomorrow.
Before the 7th, once tomorrow, and I think you're planning one on the 30th, too.
That, the, the one on the 30th is strictly for the school department and the mayor.
Okay.
So unless you want me to do it on a Thursday, I'm happy to do that.
No, I don't, honestly, I don't think we need really any special meeting in finance, to be honest with you. I, my recommendation is, we kinda have our feelings on it at this point. We, we sent it back to have a discussion around the wording. I think if we're good on that, we should just vote it out, and then take our vote on the 7th and be done with it.
Okay. Councilor Devine?
Again, just a clarification, the confusion with me lies that I think at our last meeting, I had filed an order, or I did a motion to lower it, or not lower it, to 1.5, to keep it at 1.5, and that was passed. So now, what happens to that? And I think the Law Department needs to let us know, because if that's still viable, will we have two ballot, you know what I'm saying, two ballot questions? Or that's, I'm just confused about that.
Councilor Jordane and Councilor Bacon, I do see your hand.
If you recall, Madam Chair, after, after we took the vote on, that was defeated, we reconsidered our action on it, and we sent it back to Finance. So that is still now sitting live. No final action now because we reconsidered our action on it. It's now sitting before Finance, so we would have to, you know, vote to do that. And of course, some of us have proposed that we do those both in one, that says we lower it, but not take a position on it for the purposes of the ballot question, and then send it out for, for a vote. And hopefully, we have critical mass at Finance that we can, we can get that out here and then take a final action on, on those items. So we do have that before us.
If I might... Yeah, sure. I guess the, the thing I'm trying to understand is, when we did the other vote, the Law Department said we needed two votes. One was on the rate, and one was on the language.
That's right.
But I don't think we have the language yet on that original vote to keep it at 1.5. And that's where I'm getting confused.
Oh, okay. We, we actually, if I may, Madam President, we do. It's in the committee, we have everything. The only thing for the ballot question that we need to change is the date that we finally adopted. So in this case, say we did it on May 7th, it would have to be changed to May 7th, I think it says October. Attorney Dignan said that as long as we hit both elements, we can do it. We, you are correct to bring up, you're supposed to vote to say that you're lowering it, but in the same one, we're also saying that we also are passing it to just get it on the ballot. It's a formality step, as you know, to, you can't put it on the ballot without the council first voting to lower it, to give the public the opportunity to vote whether it should, should actually happen. If you don't do, if you don't vote this initial step, then you're not allowed to actually have the residents vote. So the point at this stage is, and this is what these 130 and whatever other number of residents and businesses that have come forward have asked us to do, is they want an opportunity to vote. So that, that's the proposal currently in Finance, that we would vote to do those two things and send it to the ballot.
I don't want to keep going back.
Okay. I do have Councilor Bacon waiting.
We'll, we'll figure it out in Finance together.
Councilor Rivera, after. Sorry, I'm just keeping track, go ahead.
So tomorrow in Finance, since that's one of the...
Tabled items.
Tabled items. Can we bring that out? But I don't want to vote on it tomorrow night, because I'm still looking for more information.
Okay.
So can we do that legally? And then put it back into committee?
Well, I want you to, if I may, Madam President, I want you to feel comfortable, Patty, so if you're, and I know you've been doing a lot of looking into and, and research on this topic, so I want you to feel comfortable, if you need to, the 30th. I think it's really a five-minute discussion at that point. It won't take up much time on the 30th, and then if we could vote it out then, as long as we do at some point before May 7th is the point. Because I want the citizens, and I'm sure everyone on the council, one way or the other, want the citizens, when they come to their citizen meeting, to actually see their council take final action.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Councilor Bacon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to confirm that I was the one that made the motion to reconsider, and for the benefit of the public, it is item 16 on the Finance Agenda as a tabled item for people who want to look at the actual language that had been originally sent to the council.
Thank you.
And I would note that there are over 20 more names on the petition. We got a duplicate copy prior to the meeting tonight, and so there are two more sheets that had also been submitted from the public, so those should be forthcoming. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Israel Rivera?
I was wondering if I could ask a question to Legal with regards to that, around the petition piece, right? Because my understanding before was that if they petitioned for it, like, that automatically skips the step of having to go through the council, and it goes on the, like, it skips a step, more or less, because they petitioned for it. And in the past, the council took the initiative to do it for themselves and put it on so that the residents didn't have to do that, right? So what's the difference? They got the, the signatures now, right? So then what's holding that, that piece up?
Counselor, or Attorney Bissonette, did you hear that?
I did, Madam President. Good evening, councilors.
Aye.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I would remind the councilors that the council did not require a petition back when this was initially considered. The council voted to place it on the ballot and allow the voters to move forward without the necessity of citizens, excuse me, petition under the statute. However, in attempting to amend a voter enacted CPA surcharge, the statute's pretty clear that it has to be done by the same process. So in this case, other than public opinion, the petition process really has no effect on whether or not to have the CPA on this November's ballot. As Attorney Dagnan has advised previously, and I concur, it takes two votes. One would be for the council to approve the reduction, and two would be for the council to approve sending that reduction before the voters this November. I would also advise, we've got some time constraints to try to get that to the legislature, although unlike a home rule petition, this automatically would go on the ballot should the council take those two votes. I hope that answered your question.
No, that clarifies everything, thank you, I appreciate it.
You bet, thank you.
Thank you. From my own knowledge, maybe this is a question for Attorney Bissonette, as far as the notification for this goes, Jeffrey and I were just wondering, what does that look like? Like notice of the meeting?
A meeting by petition can be either done as a special meeting, or it can be added to the agenda. The problem with adding it to a regular agenda is that, in this context, there are no guidelines, so you would have to establish some guidelines as to how long that section of the agenda would go. Either/or is acceptable, as the, the charter provision provides for the public to have a public forum to express its views. How that forum is conducted is up to the council.
Okay, so it's not necessarily like a public hearing where we have to notify a butters or something, it's, or in the paper, or anything like that? Okay.
Part of your regular agenda.
Okay, all right, cool. Thank you. Anyone else?
Madam Chair?
Oh, sorry, Councilor Bacon?
Thank you. I just wanted to add, in terms of what Attorney Bissonette just correctly said, that in addition to that, Attorney Dagnan had said that the motion could be made for the two votes in one motion, so that a counselor could offer a motion to reduce the CPA from 1.5 to 1, and place it on the ballot without taking a position. And she said that would be in proper order, to combine them, as long as it was specific that it was two things, if I understood her correctly. Attorney Bissonette, I see you nodding yes?
I think that's an interpretation that would pass muster with the Secretary of State, and I would note that that's the exact language used to enact.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, on the motion?
So this is to, our motion, just for clarity, is that we're gonna set it for the 7th at 7 o'clock? Okay, very good.
So the motion has been made and seconded to set the, the meeting to discuss this, May 7th during a regular council meeting, 7 o'clock. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Great, moving forward. Item 12 is a petition from Ivory Billiards Lounge for 17 pool tables.
I'm assuming this is for a renewal, right?
Yeah, it didn't, nothing was checked in the corner there.
Yes, it's for renewal, sorry, I didn't add that in.
Oh, okay, so this is for renewal?
I'll make them approve the, so long as they got all, are enough to date.
So motion has been made and seconded to approve the renewal for Ivory Billiard Lounge, and it looks like they do, the, the treasurer's office has signed off as, and the tax collector. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Aye? Any opposed? So moved. Okay. President's report. That's me. All right. So I'll keep it brief. Thanks to everyone that was able to come last Thursday to the Chamber of Commerce Elected Officials Reception. It was an awesome turnout from the council, so that was great. The Hoyoke Gas and Electric has invited us on a tour. They do this annually, or maybe it's every other year. Kate Sullivan has emailed us, so please be sure to RSVP and let her know. I believe it's next Tuesday. Mini Golf is this Saturday at the library. Check it out if you're interested. It's a fundraiser for the library. Always a good time. And I wanted to just also mention, I was asked to just share that One Hoyoke CDC is hosting its Earth Day kickoff for their Keep Hoyoke Clean campaign. Earth Day is on Monday, April 22nd. 43 Canal Street is where everyone's going to be meeting at 12:30. So if you're able to join and pitch in, great. If you can't, that's okay, because cleanups are going to happen throughout the summer into September. So check out their schedule. Let Nairobi know if you want to host your own cleanup. They will provide all the supplies. And I was asked to share, the Children's Museum is hosting an event on April 25th at the Children's Museum. And they're going to be celebrating a new exhibit. Very exciting. It's a technician center. Pretty cool. Anyway. And then last thing, just want everyone to know that Jeffrey and I are working with Mara Garcia on figuring out budget hearings for May. So I want you all to rest assured that that is on my radar and it's super fun to try to schedule those. So stay tuned, but hoping we can do things as efficiently and as soon as possible so that we're not waiting until the last minute. And I know May and June get really busy, so hopefully this week we'll be able to send you some dates to save. Anyone else? Awesome. Great. Thank you. All right. We're going to, we're moving on to reports of committees. Look at us go. Item 13, the Committee on Ordinance to Whom Was Referring an Order, Petition for Speed Humps for Laurel Street. Recommended that the petition be granted. Counselor Rivera?
Thank you. This was last Wednesday, I believe. Yeah. And we had maybe 20, 15 or 20 residents out from Laurel Street and neighboring streets as well. And they came out and spoke pretty much their truths about past accidents, past instances with what they would call crazy drivers and speeding all up and down Laurel Street, a variety of different accidents that have occurred throughout the last five to six years, according to what they've mentioned, and maybe further. I think we had good discussion, good engagement. It was a pretty good experience. And for me, I live on Willow Street, so I live on the street that parallels Laurel. I totally understand the plight that they deal with on a regular basis. I walk my dog on that street and I go to the park with my two daughters, and it is kind of dangerous at times with regards to people speeding up and down the street. We voted to support this as a council, as a committee, to push it forward. I think where it lands after we vote on it as a full council has to do money and budget-wise with regards to whether we can fit it in. And then the other piece is whether we have a city engineer that can help follow through on these things. But yeah, I would defer to some of the other committee members if they have anything else to add with regards to this particular order. But we would motion to approve the speed humps.
Second.
Motion, maybe the first reading?
Yeah. I was going to get my paper out.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, I got you. Okay. Under, motion is to pass the first reading, under discussion. Anyone else?
Motion to pass the first reading.
Second.
All right. Any other discussion? Any other questions or comments? Okay. Motion to pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion, okay, now, motion to pass the second reading.
The motion is to pass the second reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion that the passage be ordained.
Motion that the passage be ordained. The clerk will call a roll. If you vote yes, you are voting to recommend that the petition be granted.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Yes, he said yes.
He said yes.
Vacan?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Ivner?
Yes.
Grayney?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Murphy Rombaletti?
Yes.
Ocasio?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you. Counselor Vacan, do we have your permission to sign off on the orders from ordinance here?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Counselor Bartley?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rolls and take 32 out of order, because that kind of goes with this particular one, if I may.
Motion has been made and seconded to take item 32 out of order. Item 32 reads, it's filed by Councilors Bartley, Rivera, and Sullivan, that the mayor and DPW finance speed humps at Laurel Street. Please see the petition approved in ordinance on April 10th and at the full city council on the 16th, 17th.
Whatever date.
16th. Refer to the mayor and finance. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you. So, item 14, the Committee on Ordinance to Whom Was Referring an Order, that an ordinance be established to address the two-third majority vote of the body for votes. Legal, please provide the language necessary for review. Recommended that the order with two separate legal drafts be referred to the council without recommendations. Do we have the legal language?
No.
No.
So we will be, I motion to table this until we get, uh, thank you. And then until we get actual language for us to review on both sides. We had it at full council, I mean, at the last committee meeting, but again, there were some amendments added to those language, to that language, and it wouldn't be fair for us to just share around that and then assume what the amendments were from that day. Hopefully, we'll have it then. I would go into some conversation about the two-thirds majority vote, but I feel like it'd be a waste of air right now. So it makes sense to just push it down the road and wait for, till we have the actual language in front of us. And then one thing I wanted to point out, the reason why there's two is so that we can have a vote on whichever one we decide, and then we move forward from there. The way I kind of function is I'm not going to choose one and push it forward or try to push one forward. I want to make it fair for everyone, so we put both languages and whichever one wins, wins. If neither wins, then we stay where we're at.
Thank you.
And thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Vacan, did you have your hand up?
I'm all set. Thank you. We already have the motion to table, so we can't debate.
Okay. That's okay. Great. Thank you. So motion has been made and seconded to table item 14. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. And Counselor McGrath Smith has joined us on Zoom, so thank you. All right. Item 15, the Committee on Ordinance to Whom Was Referring an Order, that we ban single-use plastic bags, straws, and/or food containers. Recommend the order be given leave to withdraw. Counselor Rivera?
Yes, thank you. This order was filed by Counselor Maldonado Villas. And I brought it up because it was there. It's one that I kind of feel like there's something that we can kind of do with, with regards to this. But I think for now, we can leave it, give it leave to withdraw. We voted 3-0 to give it leave to withdraw. I'll refile another order, something similar to that, to get more to the crux of what we're looking for with regards to preventing as much litter as we can with regards to plastic bags, straws, and food containers. But after the meeting, I would say that, interestingly, I stopped at the gas station over there on South Street. I go there every day when I can. And I spoke to the gas attendant, and he told me that in Connecticut, this is already a process for the whole state of Connecticut, and that if you wanted a plastic bag, you got to pay 10 cents. If you want a brown bag, you got to pay 5 cents. And that the state of Connecticut makes revenue off the 5 and 10 cents. In my head, I'm like, how can we do that in Hoyoke? But I just know that it's something that's already happening, and I think there's actually a bill being put forth at the state house with regards to this. So if we don't tackle it, maybe they'll be tackled at the state level, but I'll follow up with that.
Thank you.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Anyone else? So motions are made and seconded to give leave to withdraw. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved.
Madam President, could we take up items 16 and 17 together, please?
Sure. Motion has been made and seconded to take items 16 and 17 together as a package. Item 16 is Committee on Finance to Whom An Order Was Referring, settlement agreement by and between the City of Hoyoke and NAG, R1180 Clerical Union. Recommend that the order be referred to council without recommendation. And item 17, the Committee on Finance appropriated a transfer in fiscal year '24 for $60,000 from mayor contract negotiations to assessor, Assistant Assessor, Administrative Assistant Assessor, DPW, Building Custodian, War Memorial, Second Assistant City Clerk, Senior Administrative Assistant City Clerk, Administrative Assistant to the City Clerk, Assistant Registered Our Voters, Senior Administrative Assistant Building and Codes, Assistant of Board of Health, Sanitarian, Public Health Nurse, Senior Deputy Tax Collector, Payroll Specialist. Recommend that the order be referred to the council without recommendation. Counselor Devine?
Yes. What we did was, some of the councilors had questions about the method that the union used to compare salaries from Chickaby, West Springfield, and other cities. And my understanding is that Counselor Jordan had a couple of questions, and that they've been answered. And this is a contract negotiation that has been approved by the union, approved by the mayor, that they had a ratification. So I would make a motion that we pass this and let them have their negotiated raises.
Madam Chair?
Just, Counselor Grayney?
Just quickly, I'm unclear of what the cost was. I was at the meeting, but I didn't get the cost of the NAGA contract.
I couldn't hear.
The cost of the NAG contract?
$60,000. It's on the item 17.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Jordan?
First of all, thank you to the committee for allowing me an opportunity to ask some questions of personnel. And as you know, our personnel administrator, she had a loss in her family, so she was away. But I was able to catch up with her. She was, as always, very helpful. Couple of things. One is, just so we're clear about the NAG contract, there's a three-year contract with COLA increases, which are in addition to the $60,000 that we're voting on here, just so we're all clear. So that contract has a series of increases. This particular year, I believe, they're doing COLAs of about $84,000 is what the value of the COLAs are. That has already been approved by city council. So this is in addition to that, because they had an element of the contract that said that they would do a reopener relative to doing the salary study to see if additional increases due to market forces, us compared to other towns, justified a further increase in these positions. So they did that about roughly half the positions warranted an additional market adjustment. So the thing that I want to just point out is, I am ultimately going to vote in favor of this. I feel like they did a good job with the study. I had an opportunity to go through it, once I was provided an actual copy of it, and had the opportunity to ask all my questions. The thing that I would just point out is to leadership of the city, of which, you know, we're the funding side of it and approving the money, is warranted. If you look at the titles, and I asked about the experience variances between the people on this side of the other towns versus here, you can definitely make the case for these adjustments. Having said that, I do just caution to make the point that you also have to do a comparison of the financial capacity of our city versus these other cities to make these pays. Okay? So for example, for Agawam, who has a levy that is much bigger than ours, and has a tax base that is much bigger than ours, believe it or not, Agawam, has a levy about $12 million higher than ours, and they have much more capacity to tax, yet, and have a reduced tax burden vis a vis us, they can afford to pay more. Chickaby has an unbelievable financial condition of their city right now. They have an ability, for example, they took $10 million of their ARPA money and put it in their stabilization account. And we didn't do that. We needed it just to balance our budget, which is one of the points I'm getting to here momentarily, is we use $3 million of ARPA funds to balance this current fiscal year budget. Where's that coming from? You know, we're about to find out. This is going to get real interesting in May, when we see how the rubber hits the road here real soon. The point is, all communities are not billed equal. And I need, for my own, to get it off my chest, to basically say, it's, we have to look at our analysis beyond just saying, well, I do X job in Hoyoke and they do X job in Chickaby and Agawam, so I therefore deserve the exact same pay as somebody in Agawam and Chickaby. There's more variables to this than just that. That is, do we have a capacity to pay more? And the question is, we're getting to a point that I'm just saying, if leadership, and I'm trusting the mayor here, that he's going to balance this all out, and that he can afford, in addition to these COLA increases, he can afford to pay this extra $60,000. That's what they're pitching to the city council. All I'm saying is, we can't just keep going up, 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 up. We need to see on the other side, where are we cutting? Because we, at the end of the day, have a finite amount of money, and it isn't, so on the point of the study, are these raises justified? Yes. So therefore, I'm going to vote for them. But I'm also doing it on the basis that management is representing to me that they can afford this, and that there's going to be resources to make this all work. And as we do these studies, I think it's important to also look, as I said, and I want to enter that into the equation of the financial capacity of each of these cities that is being evaluated to pay more money. And the reality is, we may not be able to be at the top salaries or at the average on every single position. And there's certainly some, in certain departments, where we're actually paying more, and that has to, in some of the expensive departments, and that has to be evaluated. So as we think about this, you know, I want to support this. I had to kind of really think about this. I am going to vote for this. I encourage you to vote for it, but this, there needs to, we need to be very tight with this budget, because we've got some big challenges facing us in the FY26 budget, excuse me, FY25 budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Grayney, and then Counselor Vacan.
Just quickly, Madam Chair, the cost of this is going to be more than $60,000. But I'm going to support it, because these people deserve the money. They work hard, and we have an obligation to take care of our employees. But $60,000 is not the bottom line. Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Vacan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I agree with the prior speakers that the study, in terms of the market rates, does justify the rates of pay that these individuals listed will be brought to. However, as we're seeing with the increasing minimum wage rates and other things throughout the country, my concern is that if we're not able to find more efficiencies and reduce costs elsewhere, that while it is fair to increase the rate of pay, my concern is that we might end up potentially facing layoffs of people if we get to the point where we just can't put more tax burden on our residents to fund a budget that is growing much more rapidly than their income. Because for the last few years, we've had our residents telling us that they're maxed out on the property taxes, and many are having to look to find alternate living situations because they're finding it impossible to maintain all the costs for a home that they've actually paid for totally. So I do agree that the study is valid. My concern is the bigger picture. And I'm hoping that we have our free cash certified before we're asked to vote on the budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Rivera.
Thank you. I think, just with regards to, we're not, we're a small city with big problems. And because of that, makes it a little difficult for us to, like, other councillors had mentioned before, for us to compare ourselves with local communities that are closer by. There are not many that, in the state, probably, throughout the country, that we can actually have a fair comparison with regards to budget, with regards to pays and competing with others and just for the employment in the workforce. I don't disagree that we, we, there's a bubble pretty much, right? And there's only a level of where we can get to. But I also think that there has to be a space for us to try to hold ourselves to a standard where we can expect some consistency with employment and with staff. And the only way we can do that is by growing with them at the same time. I know it puts constraints on the budget. It puts constraints on our taxpayers. I think the responsibility would be on who's creating the budget to try to see how you can shift and move funding from one space to another to make sure things don't get cut. I think that there is an unfair or not a balanced approach with regards to how we fund our departments throughout the city overall. There are some departments that take up a huge chunk of the budget, whereas others are struggling just to get by. I think that if we take this thought process of what the costs are, right, and in some departments, you should take that same, we should be taking that same approach with all the other departments that have the much larger budgets and they're constantly coming back and asking us for money too as well. So I think that, although I agree, there's a piece where we got to be consistent with that same approach. Because if we're giving one department a significant amount of money and then another department is lacking behind, it's hurting our daily services for the taxpayers as well. You, I mean, you don't want to pay for services that are not quality services at the same time. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Givner.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I mean, Madam President. I just wanted to reiterate that, you know, it is really important to retain our employees. It's not, it's definitely not, never good to lose them, but it's even worse to lose them to other cities over, you know, ten grand. So I think we, we have to consider our budget all the time, but we also have to consider how much it costs to replace employees, to retrain employees. We have to think about the cost to the city for hiring consultants to do the employees' work when they're not here. So I think it's an investment in our community when we make sure to pay our employees what they've negotiated, what they're worth, and try to keep up with, you know, a competitive rate. They don't have to be at the top of the, of the scale or of the slide, whatever the range is for employees, you know. But I think as long as it's within the vicinity of what they would make elsewhere, then it's not worth it to them either to quit and go somewhere else. So we have to keep our rates at a, at a level where we keep our employees. We've trained them and they're getting poached by other cities. And it's not a narrative, it's a fact. So I think we really need to keep that in mind so we're not wasting money on, on all these consultants because it seems like we're spending a lot of time and money hiring consultants, figuring out which consultant is the best, paying for studies, when there's a lot of this stuff that could be done in-house if we just retained our employees. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Graney.
I'm sorry for, just quickly, when we compare our community to other communities, you have to take into consideration the large number of nonprofit organizations we have here in Hoyoke that don't pay taxes. And some of it is choice property. So we have a deficit right there because of all these nonprofits that don't pay. And the last time I checked, there was fifteen pages of them. So that's just, just to put that out there, to understand that a lot of these other communities don't have the number of nonprofits that their properties are all paying taxes. And that kind of puts us in a bind.
Thank you. Counselor Rivera.
And another piece I kind of wanted to add was like, although other communities do have more money and all the other stuff, the bills are almost still the same, though. Like, you go to the mall, whatever clothes you buy is going to be the same cost, no matter if you live in Hoyoke, Agawam, West Springfield. If you buy milk at Stop &amp; Shop, it'll cost the same whether you live in Hoyoke, Springfield, Agawam. So I think that although we don't have the cash out here like that in the community, I think the people that are working for us should be able to afford the daily amenities that they need to do their daily services or just to live in general. But again, it's, I hear the concern and the concern makes sense. I just think that there has to be a more balanced approach about how we allocate funding to the departments with regards to how funding is spent, where it goes, and what is the actual outcome that's coming out of the money that's being invested into certain departments. Thank you.
Thank you. So on the motion, the motion was to pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
A motion to pass the second reading and the clerk will call the roll.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
No.
Devine?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Graney?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
Yes.
Acasio?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Eleven ayes, one nay.
With that, you've passed. Are you, Meg, you're off mute, just letting you know.
Oh, yeah.
Oh.
I didn't realize that.
Oh, sorry, sorry. Counselor McGrath Smith is here.
I didn't realize she was back on, I apologize.
No, that's okay. Thanks, Meg.
What was your vote? Yes?
Yes, please.
Okay, so twelve ayes, one nay.
And Counselor McGrath Smith, do we have your approval to sign off on these orders that are here?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. All right. So. Item number eighteen. Committee on Finance to whom an order was referred that the city council review for approval the fiscal year twenty-four projects recommended for funding by the Hoyoke Community Preservation Act Committee recommended that the Appleton Mill project be referred to full council without recommendation and all and other projects be adopted. Counselor Devine.
Be received and adopted. I'm not sure if Counselor McGrath Smith would like to speak on these. For myself, I would like to, it's up to everybody here. I can read the ones that we're in favor of. That would be the Library Commons Phase, the Jones Point Phase, Wisteria Hearse Retaining Wall. They're finally going to be doing that. The City Hog Granite Stairs, doing a feasibility study. The Korean War Memorial Restoration and Hoyoke Veterans Graves Restoration Project and the Hoyoke Mary Ground Replacement as well. And I would like to talk more about Article One, which is the Appleton Mills, which is a far alpaca building, which is going to be used for housing. But we didn't take a recommendation on that. But perhaps Counselor McGrath Smith could talk about that if she feels the need.
Okay, thank you. Other councillors, discussion? Counselor Jordan?
Could I make a friendly suggestion that we vote on the package of seven in one vote for everything but Appleton Mills? And then we'll take a separate vote on the Appleton Mills recommendation. We cannot, we can reduce it. We cannot move it to any place else. I'll let Counselor McGrath Smith speak, but I believe I'm correct on the rules that we cannot add to the CPA committee's recommendation. We cannot shift money from one item to another. You can only reduce it all the way theoretically down to zero. And I believe it's two hundred thousand dollars is the Appleton Mills
Yes.
request from CPA.
Okay, so the motion was made and seconded to approve the projects. And I can read them. And then I believe Counselor McGrath Smith. And Counselor Bacon, did you have your hand up?
I'm all set. I was just going to say something that was covered already. Thank you.
Awesome, thank you. All right, and then Counselor Givner. But let me just, I'll read these ones. This is for, should we read them all into the? Not going to read each one. That's all it says.
I have them here if you need to.
I guess, well, you read them all, so, all right, all those.
Could you just add the dollar amounts? It might be helpful.
Yeah.
I can go through this if you.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Those seven, just so people at home can know.
Sounds good. Counselor Devine, you want to do that?
Yep, Library Commons Phase Two Housing Project for a hundred thousand dollars. And the CPA committee voted six to two. The next one is the Jones Point Phase One Rehabilitation for three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And the committee voted eight to zero. The next one is Wisteria Hearse Retaining Wall and that's for two hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars. And that was voted eight to zero from the CPA committee. Number five, I have City Hog Granite Stairs, a thirty thousand dollar feasibility study. That was voted seven to one. Then the Korean War Memorial Restoration Project, two thousand dollars. And that was an eight to zero vote. And then the Hoyoke Veterans Graves Restoration Project, that was six thousand dollars and that was eight to zero vote. And the Hoyoke Mary Ground Replacement of the stirrups on the horses, eight to zero, and that was sixteen thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five. Okay.
Motion that those be approved.
Second.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Under discussion, Counselor McGrath Smith.
Well, I'm wondering if it makes sense to talk about the Appleton Mills project yet, which I do want to speak to when we get to that second vote. I think I will just say to clarify right now that the reason why Library Commons Two had a six to two vote was not for lack of popularity, especially, same thing with Appleton Mills. It was a combined vote to have one hundred thousand recommended for Library Commons Two and two hundred thousand dollars for the wind development project, where there were some members of the committee that wanted to fully fund the wind development project instead of splitting and giving some amount of what was requested of us to both projects. Both projects requested more than what we recommended. Library Commons Two asked for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars and we recommended a hundred thousand. And Appleton Mills requested three hundred thousand and we recommended two hundred thousand as a committee.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Givner and then Counselor Rivera.
I had, I wanted to speak about Appleton Mill, but I wasn't sure if this is the right.
Let's just do this vote first.
Okay.
Counselor Rivera.
I mean, I kind of wanted to see, I would rather vote on them all separate. I'm not going to lie to you. Just because, like, I don't know, all in one shot. Because if, I would rather support the wind development one and then not have it trump. I mean, have one trump the other, you get what I'm saying? And it sounds like that's what kind of happened in that meeting. That's why it's six to vote for the other one, which is the Library Commons Project. But the will of the body, it is what it is.
Counselor Bartley?
Yeah, just want to quick, do we know what the balance will be? This is about seven hundred and seventy thousand dollars exclusive of the wind development. So I'm just curious what our balance is in CPA funds.
Counselor Devine?
I think my notes say nine hundred and ninety-three thousand this would cover.
Okay.
But Counselor McGrath Smith really is the expert.
Counselor McGrath Smith?
I'm pulling up the budget slide now, just so I can refer to it.
Okay.
If you want to come back to me, I certainly can find it and answer.
Okay. Does anyone have further? Counselor Rivera?
Yeah, just another question to add to that when she gets to the budget. Because I think there's, of whatever the, whatever the amount of funding they have in there, it's supposed to be split like thirty-three percent in between three different buckets. So would, well, I don't know if I'm correct. You can correct me if I'm wrong with regards to the exact data. But with regards to those two buckets of housing, would that still, like, that all falls under the same amount? You know what I mean? You get what I'm trying to say, Meg?
I do, yeah. So we're required by the state legislation to expend or reserve to that specific category ten percent for each one. And that's housing, historic or open space and recreation. And the current recommendations you have in front of you from the committee, three hundred thousand is being recommended for housing, three hundred and eighteen thousand is being recommended for historic and three hundred and fifty thousand is being recommended for open space and recreation. So it's actually close to a third, a third, a third this time around, which is unique for us because we've sort of hovered right kind of above and below the ten percent that were required over the last few years. But we also haven't seen any housing projects come to us the last two years because so many went right to ARPA funding. And there are just not that many shovel-ready housing projects moving forward. They take a really long time. And so as a result, you know, these two projects happened to sort of come to a head this one funding cycle together. But that seems to be in many ways an anomaly based on what the committee has experienced over time in terms of like how long it takes to get all of the funding sources ready to go to move forward with the housing projects in our city.
Thank you.
On the motion?
Second.
All right, so that is the motion to pass the first reading.
Motion to pass this first reading.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Motion to pass the second reading.
A motion to pass the second reading. The clerk will call the roll. If you are voting yes, you are voting to approve the previously mentioned seven projects.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Graney?
Yes.
Excuse me. Jordan?
Yes.
McGrath Smith?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
Yes.
Acasio?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Okay, with that, you've approved those projects. Is there another motion?
Motion to take up the Appleton Mills, Mill Far Alpaca Housing for two hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded to take up the Far Alpaca for two hundred thousand for CPA. Counselor Devine?
This was, we didn't want to have a recommendation. I believe it was Counselor Sullivan who brought some interesting facts to the meeting. So I don't mean to say, maybe he should talk about them, but maybe he should talk about them.
Counselor Sullivan?
Unfortunately, I don't have all my notes with me, but I think I can do this one mostly off the top of my head. And to put it very bluntly and briefly for everyone on the council and everyone in the public to understand, this two hundred thousand dollars goes directly into the pockets of the investors, the principals into wind development. Okay, that's where it goes. Doesn't go anywhere else. They knew what they were getting into when they took on this project. It's a fifty-five, sixty-million-dollar project. They're looking for two hundred thousand dollars from us. They claim in their presentation that if they don't get this two hundred thousand, they'll have to cut back on some of the amenities for the units. That's two hundred thousand dollars in a fifty-five-million-dollar, sixty-million-dollar project. That represents four tenths of one penny. Not even a full penny, all right, of the entire budget of this project. And they're telling us that if we don't give them that two hundred, they're going to have to cut back on amenities. Make no mistake, approve this, putting money in their pockets. That's it.
Thank you, Counselor, Counselor Givner and then Counselor Bacon.
Thank you, Madam President. I think those are very valid points and I don't think they approached. and I, I don't think they approached that very well. However, there is something to be said about having Holyoke stamp on various projects. And, you know, I do wonder... I know that, like, on some other committees, you know, sometimes when we're giving out grants, part of the idea is, is even if it's not funding the whole thing, and even if it's just a drop in the bucket for what they need for a project, it allows, you know, us as an organization to put our stamp on the project. So, you know, essentially, we become one of the funders of this 88, you know, housing unit senior project, which I think speaks volumes for the city, and it looks good. Um, I understand not wanting to put, uh, $200,000 in the pockets of these developers 'cause I don't, I mean, I can see your point, and I, I agree. However, I do like the idea of Holyoke putting money into a project like this and being able to say, you know, this is one of our projects, we helped fund this, because I think it, it just shows our, you know, money spent on things that the city needs. So, that's one side of the argument. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor. Um, Counselor Bacon, and then Counselor Jordan.
Thank you. So, a question first. If we do not approve this project, then am I correct in my understanding that CPA committee can then repurpose the money for another current project and/or a new project? To whoever knows that answer?
I, I believe it has to be housing, but I will stand corrected if I am wrong.
But it could go to, say, the housing project that we just approved. More funding could be given to that.
Uh, please, the chair to Counselor Bacon?
Sure, Counselor McGrath Smith?
So, this is a, a process that the committee has adopted to put forward all recommendations in one placard, um, as you will, altogether, in order to really prevent back and forth. Um, I think the spirit of the legislation where it says, you know, that the council can, for example, um, reject or decrease an amount, but cannot move it to another project or cannot, uh, increase it, sort of speaks to the desire that it not be a back and forth, where council could say, we don't like it on this project, we move it to another. Um, the, the council certainly could try that, um, but we have not got a precedent to allow for that as a, as a committee. Um, I assume that if this is accepted, it would just go back to... It would, it would not be encumbered, and so it would go back to the general fund. And then, uh, next year, it would be in the general, uh, fund for when we are making our new set of recommendations.
Okay, and, and I do also understand, if I remember the discussion correctly, that they'd been given some funding, but they hadn't used it. So they're coming back again, um, under the same project, which was a high-risk project from the beginning. So, um, I guess...
You mean Library Commons Two?
The...
Library Commons Two was, was...
Project. Is the one I'm talking about. So, so, um, I think I will take heed to Counselor Sullivan's words in this regard. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Jordan?
Well, um, I have a lot of concerns about this. Number one is unfortunately, our stamp on the project will actually literally be stamps on the envelopes of the dividend checks that are being sent out to Wind Development shareholders. You, you will have your stamp on the project. It's gonna be mailing very wealthy people more money. And the irony of, of that from just a basic social justice perspective, think about it, that we are sold on CPA that we pass the hat to the poorest residents in the Commonwealth, and we ask them all to throw 30, 40, 50 dollars a year in a hat so that it can go towards affordable housing and other noble projects. And the seven of the eight that we just approved are, are noble projects. This is a noble project, but this is a business development project. This is not, uh, to give someone a check for 200 grand, a big-time company like Wind Development on a 60 million dollar project. I mean, no, no, no. What these dollars should be used for is rehabbing some three-family home in Holyoke that otherwise would not get redeveloped. Um, redeveloping an apartment block in town that wouldn't maybe otherwise get developed, and then they turn it into affordable housing on a smaller project. Maybe it's a $2 million project, maybe it's a $3 million project. And that 200 grand would actually maybe make or break, um, what they need to actually have the project be a go. Um, or provide, you know, five or six different projects where you give them each 40, 50 grand. Uh, that could be actually, um, different, um, and, and could be game-changing in the business plan of some smaller affordable projects. So, you know, this is what I think we should be doing. Not writing, you know, big checks to Wind Development so that, you know, they put on instead of, uh, I can't even, you know, this kinda doorknob, they're gonna put on this kinda doorknob. I mean, give me a break. That, is that really what we're gonna call our contribution to affordable housing? These are supposed to be dollars that are game-changing, not drops in buckets. And I think we need to be strategically using these dollars. So, um, from that perspective, you know, I'm gonna, gonna tell some senior citizen who's going probably without a new window pane in their house this year because they've gotta pay the CPA tax so that they can go give their money to some shareholder at Wind Development. Um, that just doesn't sit right with me. But maybe it sits right with seven or more people in the room, but not, not with me. So anyways, I'll, I'll be voting no. And it should be noted that if we vote no on this, the money doesn't turn into a pumpkin. It just goes into the pot, and it waits till the next project comes along, and then we'll probably be unanimously in favor of that. But I, I think the CPA committee needs to get this kinda feedback from its elected officials, which is this room, this is why this process works, um, that it's the two of us that are doing it. And I appreciate the spirit. I think it's great what Wind Development's doing. It's wonderful. They're, I'm sure they're getting, uh, a number of levels of different assistance. But this awfully feels like, hey, you know, CPA's got some money, go send in an application to them, ask them for a couple hundred grand, and, and here you go. It, it's like add-on money. It's, it's not like this is consequential to the project anyways. So, um, I, I think Counselor Sullivan makes valid points in this regard, and, and ultimately, I, I think we should go in that direction. Thank you.
Thank you. I have quite a few people in line. I've got Counselor McGrath Smith, and then Counselor Anderson Burgos.
Thank you. Um, I just want to share, uh, some, some information, just some more details about the project. So, I wanna name that, um, you know, this is a project that creates 88 affordable senior apartments. Um, and the idea is that it will be affordable to seniors at a range of income. Um, so 12 units are reserved for households below 30%, 63 units, uh, for households at 60%, and 13 for households at 80%. So if you look at the, uh, the area median income or AMI, which is based on the Springfield Regional Head Numbers, um, that means that if you are a single senior, these are like one and two-bedroom apartments, because the goal is that they are seniors. Um, and so, uh, if you're a single senior making 80% of AMI, that means that you might be making $61,000 a year. And you would be eligible for, for that apartment if you were 80%. Um, if you're a 50% and you're a single senior, um, single, you know, head of household, that would be $38,000. So just to give you a sense of, of sort of what that means when we talk about affordable housing, and we'll, we have a lot of folks who are seniors who are on a fixed income. Um, and I know a lot of people are really thinking deeply about how do we make sure that we're supporting folks who are like, are moving into that next stage of their life. Uh, we know that there's a lot of need for these types of, of, you know, you know, housing opportunities in our city. I know that when Library, uh, Commons Two presented to us, they said that for, um, Library Commons, uh, One, they got over 1,000 applications for just 38 units. So clearly, there's a really big need. Um, so, the other piece I wanna name around money. So, Library Commons Two is, uh, 20... 28,000, sorry, 28 million dollars as a total project cost for 41 units versus the Wind Development is 88 units for 55 million. It is insanely expensive to create housing out of old stock, and that's what we have. So I understand that for, for some, you're looking at the cost, thinking, this is so expensive, this is ridiculous. Um, but these projects are actually very comparable when you look at the price per unit in terms of what they're costing to create, and clearly, the need is there. The other thing I'll name is that, um, if the city decides, if the council decides to support this development moving forward, um, then effectively, we are saying that we are, are seeing the housing need and we're willing to respond to it. And I know that there was a comment made around, you know, are we really concerned about with this last $200,000 when it's spent 55 million? I do understand that, but also, I think that the last amount of money still matters, that is still required. And when they presented to us, it wasn't simply the exterior of the building that was, um, more than they expected. There was a lot in our conversation about the parking lot, and how when they went to create the parking lot, they did not understand what was gonna be in the substrate underneath it when they started to do the demolition. And that that actually added a massive amount of mon, uh, money as a, as a cost that they did not foresee. So it wasn't just the exterior of the building being unstable, it was also the parking lot area. Um, lastly, I will say that I do think that the knob matters. Or, and I remember when my husband and I did our kitchen, you know, the door pulls did matter, and the quality of the sinks did matter. And what we wanna do is create housing downtown that is a draw, that is a momentum builder. And I do think that we want folks to be proud of the, the houses, you know, the apartments that are living in downtown. And I do think that the amenities matter. Uh, this, this $200,000 would go not only to the finishings of the buildings, but would also go to the onsite laundry facilities, the fitness room, the commit, you know, the community center, um, at Five Essex Street. And I think that those things do matter as well, and are part of why this project was the most highly rated of any project that the CPA committee looked at. Thank you.
Thank you. I have Counselor Anderson Burgos, and then Counselor Rivera.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, so, I, I'm listening to the concerns of my colleagues, and I, I am one that do, I do not particularly like giving people who have money more money, a lot of money. But when I'm looking at it from a, a financial standpoint, I'm looking at amenities, amenities. So, when I look at that, that means the assessed value usually goes up. If the assessed value goes up for any property, that means more taxes. Ultimately, the city will make that over and over, years after year after year after year. So it's, let's get this project done, let's help them make this project happen because it's gonna bring back the money twofold, threefold. So it's not a, it's not a no-brainer, you know, it's simple math. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Rivera?
Thank you. Uh, I think for, uh, I think I agree with some of the things that have been said with regards to, um, a large entity getting a small drop in the bucket to help move things forward. But one of the things I kinda wanted to point out was what Counselor McGrath Smith said around, um, the amenities matter, like the doorknob matters. Um, growing, growing up like in subsidized housing my whole life, like... Well, now, I'm older, it's different, but like, then I, I would think about it, and I would say certain places have nicer spaces than other places. And I think that when you're doing this, and all we're putting forward, to my understanding, is 200K, if that's the case, as a city, that's to my understanding. I'm, I'm not sure if they have a TIF, right? I'm not sure if they have all these other things that are giving them tax breaks like we do on a regular basis, or that's happening everywhere else. Um, I don't think that, I don't think that's what's happening. But, um, I don't wanna give them money to put in their pockets. I don't really believe that either, though, 'cause the way things are in today's society, when you're building something, and you're trying to build out buildings, um, they're probably putting in a whole new sprinkler system, they're probably putting in everything brand new. I'm pretty sure people are not gonna get checks immediately to their house. Maybe five years down the road, there'll be something that comes up, but right now, uh, I don't buy the narrative that is continuously gonna be put out. I think that, for me, there's a piece where, when we're trying to grow our city and we're trying to do positive things, um, it doesn't hurt to support. Um, it just, it, it kills me to, to hear every time we try to do something nice or something positive, it's always, there's a way around just trying to say how the city should not support it, right? Like, the city should not be behind it, or we should not give them the funds that they need. So if we're saying that because it was a 50, 60 million dollar project, and they got themselves into that, should we not support them and help them see it through? Or should we watch them fail? I, I'm, that's, that, I think that's the piece that I have the most problem with. Uh, I'm gonna vote for it mostly because I think it makes sense. I do have the same concerns that Counselor Sullivan did array, uh, uh, bring up. But at the same time, I, I, I don't agree with the piece where it's like, if they went in over their head, let's just let them fail if that's the case. And I'm not saying they're gonna fail off of 200 grand, but still, that'll be the difference of between, it's a, it's a nicer apartment or nicer amenities for the people that are gonna live there, which will probably, oh, I don't know, be some of us in the future, right? Like, ideally, it's a, a certain age range, and, I don't know, I, I would rather rent after a certain age. I wouldn't wanna have to deal with having to pay taxes and the increases and all the other stuff after a certain age. And that place will make it something respectable, somewhere where people that own the house can now say, you know what, I wanna downgrade because this, this is, doesn't fit me anymore, and I wanna still stay in Holyoke, and this is what I can do. And I think that, that would fit their tax dollars that they put forth over the last 30, 40, 50 years, giving forth in Holyoke. We don't have this much type of housing, and the type of housing that we have, I'm not gonna lie, they're very, very small apartments. Um, I, I, I think that quality of life matters, man, and some, sometimes it doesn't hurt just to give a little extra for that, but thank you.
Thank you. I have Counselor Greeney, and then Counselor Bartley.
Uh, just quickly, uh, one of the questions that was asked was the balance on the CP. And after this, we haven't got that information yet. Uh, secondly...
Counselor McGrath Smith? I thought you confirmed it.
So after... Uh, sorry, I, I guess maybe I didn't, um, 'cause I was still pulling it up earlier.
Thank you.
So, um, after, if, if the council, uh, fully, um, you know, recommends everything that the committee has recommended, um, there will be, uh, $24,776 left in the CPA account that would be going to the general fund. Everything else of, in the account has been encumbered by city council already to an existing project that is still in motion and is still expending funds.
Thank you.
Secondly, I thought there was some kind of mandate that I heard about the $200,000. I don't know if, if that was the case or not. And thirdly, I mean, we have existing senior housing in Holyoke that could use upgrades to the tune of $200,000. And the, uh, the, the person who spoke in public session, uh, tonight, I'm sure would have some problems with Elwood Towers, where we could have an upgrade for some of those, those residents that are living there. Uh, some, there's things that haven't been done in many, many years in that particular, uh, housing project. So, that's just an aside, so I will be voting no on this, uh, $200,000.
Thank you. I have Counselor Bartley, and then Counselor Devine, and then Sullivan, and then Bacon. And Jordan.
Oh, my lord. Okay, boy.
Yes, to let everyone know.
Debate some items.
I want you all to know I see you. Thank you. Counselor Bartley?
Uh, yeah, I guess, I guess I better be pretty quick then. So, uh, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna oppose this, but I'll just, I'll just point out a couple small things. Just because I'm opposing it now doesn't mean I can't vote for something else similar to this down the road. Uh, and the reason I'm not gonna vote for it today, I just don't think the project is ready, and I don't think it's earned my support. To compare this to Library Commons is, I think, unfair because they have a proven track record. They've, they've already established their base in, in Holyoke, and they've already done a great job. Uh, I, I would also say that when I hear from our former liaison, which Mike was, his original liaison, and what he's, what he has to say, I, I would think that would carry some weight. And I don't think anybody's wanting the project to fail, Madam President. I, I just think the project is not ready for, for a 200,000 infusion of cash from Holyoke taxpayers at, at this early stage. We, we know what, we can all divide 200,000 by 54, 55 million, point zero... We, we know what, we can all divide 200,000 by 54, 55 million, point zero 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 three percent. So you don't, I mean, I think it's unfair to say that those of us are voting no or against amenities and we don't, I mean, when you look at that tiny miniscule fraction of the overall budget, to say that this 200,000 now is going to negatively impact the amenities of senior housings and dangling, dangling those red herrings out there. I, I, I don't think that's very fair. I, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say that I, I just don't think it's ready. I mean, I know I'm not going to change everybody's mind and that's okay, but, uh, and everybody got right to their own vote. But I, I, I would just say that in conclusion, hopefully we can think about this, maybe give it a no vote now. And when, when we see some real investment and when we have to come in to put our so-called stamp on it when they really need the money, coming in really clear pinpoint, this 200,000 is going to get us X, Y, and Z for these units. I think that's when you put a stamp on it and that's when I want to support it and that's when I will support it. But I don't think it's ready now. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Devine?
Um, excuse me. First of all, I'd like to certainly thank Counselor Sullivan for bringing some of these things to our attention. Um, and, and looking at the paperwork that was given to us, I'm looking at the total project cost is 55,328,551. And they also have secured all cash in it. There's a whole bunch, I don't know if everybody has this in front of them. Um, all these different, um, tax equity, tax credit, affordable housing trust loan, housing stability fund loan to the tune of 55,028,551. So that 200,000 will certainly bring the project up to what it's going to cost. So, um, for those reasons, and again, I appreciate what Counselor Sullivan, uh, brought to the table, but I'll be voting in favor of this. I think the project is a good one and I would like to say that, um, Counselor Israel Rivera, you have a long way to go before you're in a senior housing. You have two young children.
Thank you. Don't rush it. Um, Counselor Sullivan and then Counselor Bacon and then Counselor Jordane.
Okay, so I'll give this one more shot for everybody. Amenities, each unit is costing $650,000. So when everybody talks about, uh, you know, the need for affordable housing, all right? Affordable housing, $650,000 per unit. Now, Wind Development's raised all this money that they need through tax credits, grants, all, all of these things. And they've done many massive projects. I mean, they have a proven track record, track record of making a lot of money. All right? And they make money on every one of these projects. All right? $650,000 a unit. Now, if we really wanted to put our money, our taxpayers' money into some good projects, right? There's a lot out there that would do more for 88 units, right? Than spending $650,000 per unit. Think how many units, you know, Habitat for Humanity, Wayfinders and stuff like that, the bang for the buck that you get, right? The class, at, if nothing else, twice as many units, three times as many units, four times as many units. $650,000 per unit is a ridiculous number. And the final thing in comparing with Wayfinders, that was rehabbing existing housing, residential housing that had fallen into disrepair. But we've also done here is taken an industrial property and we have destroyed our commercial tax base in Hoyok and taken another one now and converted it over to residential.
Thank you. Um, Counselor Bacon?
Thank you. I'll be brief. I just have to comment on the irony of counselors who are speaking in favor of giving $200,000 of hard-earned taxpayers' money to this huge, and I don't begrudge them making money, uh, good for them, but I do find it highly ironic that the same counselors who won't vote to give a break to our overburdened taxpayers are saying they're going to vote to give their money to this wealthy, huge company. I just find it totally ironic. Thank you.
Counselor Jordane?
Yes, um, so again, I want to point out that, so actually I think it's even, I'm glad we brought up the statistic about the per unit because the per unit is kind of really interesting. And so basically we're funding one-third of one unit. Um, I, I don't know, maybe it's the living room, uh, maybe it's the kitchen of one of these apartments, uh, of one unit of 88 units. Um, hmm. So meanwhile, residents go, you know, this is what it's all about, folks. This is where we're at at this stage with the CPA. We've gotten to the point where you are paying, many of the, the folks that are on fixed income are at a point where, you know, basically we're shaking you by your ankles to get the last nickel that we can out of you and send it to City Hall and this is what we're going to do with it. We're going to fund one-third of a $650,000 apartment to a massive company that, you know, they can't take a little bit fraction less profit to cover the one-third of one unit? Meanwhile, if when saying yes to that means you're also voting to say no to rehabbing small projects in town that have much tighter go and no-go. Rehabbing two-family homes, rehabbing three-family homes in this town. So when we're saying that we're in favor of giving Wind Development, uh, I don't know, maybe another flag for their yacht, that we're going to do that, meanwhile, all these other smaller projects in town, there's no money left. It's all gone. So, um, you got to ask yourself at some point, wouldn't you rather put the 30, 40 dollars in your pocket? You know, senior citizens, so you could buy some groceries? Um, you know, this is the stuff that makes people cynical of the CPA, is exactly what's going on here. This, this is, you know, anything we all can embrace is fixing the, you know, Lady Liberty or the Korean War, uh, monument or different things. This, this is great and I herald that. But this is the stuff that makes CPA like, it's dizzying, like how we got to this point where this is the project we're going to go and say no to all of the other smaller strategic things that clean up neighborhoods and really turn projects, uh, that, you know, could use a 40 grand or could use a 50 grand. And, and then to say, because one of the arguments that I heard is, well, Counselor, we don't have those projects, you know? We just got to go with whoever steps up. Well, yeah, because if you're Wind Development and you got a team full of consultants and you got a Google, you know, gazillion-sized company, sure, they're sitting here firing out applications like machine gunfire. Whereas who's leading the horses to water of the small projects? We need to be going out and recruiting the smaller projects to rehab a two-family home or rehab a three-family home or rehab, um, a small apartment block that actually provides generational wealth to disenfranchise people in this community. We've got to be a lot more strategic in the use of public resources if we're going to turn this community around instead of just, you know, mailing a check, um, to dividend holders. So anyways, uh, I believe we've made the point. Um, I don't know how the vote will come out. Probably this will pass, um, but the words have been spoken. Have a good evening.
Thank you. I have Counselor McGrath Smith and then Counselor Rivera.
So just to respond a bit to what Counselor Jordane just said, I completely understand where you're coming from and I also, um, I find it mind-boggling how expensive these larger housing projects are. It's absolutely incredible. Not to be believed, the Library Commons II per unit cost is $691,000. So it, this, these large projects are incredibly expensive. Um, and we can get into the deeper reasons for why that is the case. Um, but that is what these larger housing projects cost per unit. When you look at what they are doing to take these older buildings that we have a huge supply of and turning them into a, a new use, right? Bringing them from vacant to back online. And this, uh, you know, the Appleton Mills building was vacant for 50 years. Um, the other piece that I will name is I have my favorite projects so far to come out of CPA have been the ones that were way more affordable, but they're very different, right? So the, the preservation plan says that for housing, we should be going after two different types of housing. We should be going after how do we take these blighted vacant buildings and bring them back onto use, back onto the tax rolls, um, and also address housing needs. The other, I know, fork of that is, uh, we should be looking at infill of empty properties where, uh, there used to be a property there but is no longer and let's infill it with new housing. And the Jackson Street project that we did with Habitat for Humanity was a great example of what can be very affordable for the city in terms of getting to that goal. Um, love that goal and I, I want to see more and more projects coming forward, uh, like that. This year, that, that project, they, you know, to do the next one in that cycle went to ARPAS, right? And, and instead of, or sorry, went to CDBG and, and as an act instead of the CPA. Uh, do I think that they will keep, you know, coming to CPA for that? Yes, and they absolutely should. They're great projects. But there's this other piece, which is that we have these massive buildings that are vacant or they are blighted and they're very expensive to figure out what is their next life and their next use. And housing is one of the things they can be used for and it is incredibly expensive. So for folks who are concerned about the Appleton Mills piece, um, I'm, I'm sorry to report that Library Commons II is not better. Um, these, all, all these projects are very expensive.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Rivera and then Counselor Givner.
I think for me to get back to with, uh, uh, the narrative piece, right? Where we, we, we have people, I, I, I have to go back to like the smoke and mirrors thing where people will say certain things and then like animate and do all these beautiful words and numbers, like disenfranchise, but like, it just, it, the piece for me that's boggling is that like, if we really care like to that extent with the taxpayers, right? There's a whole community in Ward One and Ward Two that housed the whole cannabis industry. But in reality, none of the tax dollars actually go down to their wards. Like, do any, uh, and this is the part to me that doesn't make any sense where we do smoke and mirrors. Do, does any of the tax dollars from Ward One and Ward Two residents stay in their ward? Like in reality, what do we fund Ward One and Ward Two on? CDBG grants, federal grants, state grants? How much actual tax dollars stay in Ward One and Ward Two? Can we actually have a study on that to find out? Because it feels to me that Ward One and Ward Two actually subsidize a lot of the rest of the city. But nobody calls that out and nobody says nothing, right? We're talking about the, the people that own homes in these neighborhoods. They got to fight for streets. They got to fight for speed bumps, for blinking lights. But other neighborhoods are getting this on a regular basis. And we're saying taxpayers are getting their due diligence and their due right, right? So here we have a situation where we have a project in Ward One. It becomes an issue, right? If this project was in Ward Five, would it be an issue? If this project was in Ward Seven, would it be an issue? I, this, it's so like, I think for me, where Lyman Terrace, Lyman Terrace, everybody was kicking and screaming about Lyman Terrace. Everyone in campaign season, at least the ones, I seen them down there. They're still taking advantage of it. When this is built and this is done, the same people that were kicking and screaming about giving the money, they'll be over there, right? Where's the realness here, bro? Like, let's, let's stop with the games and the politics. Let's do what we need to do to move the city forward to the best way we can. It's not our money. We're only putting $200,000 out of $50 million. $50 million! You're crying about $200,000 out of a $650,000 unit. They did the work to get the money. We're not doing the work. The city's not doing the work. If it was up to the city, all the buildings would still be abandoned. Because are we the ones fixing the buildings? Are we the ones investing in the buildings? Are we the ones taking the time out to get grants? And I'm going to be honest, there, the grant process for CPA is not that hard. CPA members were applying for grants themselves. So it's a gas, smoke and mirrors. Stop, please. Let's just do what we need to do for the city, please. I'm not, I, I don't want to go to war back and forth about dumb stuff. Let's do what makes sense. If it financially doesn't make sense, all right, but it's 200K for a community that technically has been paying taxes for a long time and doesn't get the same, the same thing back. You may not agree, but until we get a study done, that's what I'm leading with. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Givner?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, here, here, Counselor Rivera, I agree. Um, so I just wanted to reiterate that, you know, these grants have to be applied for. So to some of the points, why aren't these money spent elsewhere? People get grants who apply. So if you don't apply, you don't qualify for a grant. You don't just get a grant because you have a building and you need some work. You have to ask for the money. These applications come through, they ask for the money. Um, I think it speaks highly that this was the, uh, the most recommended project from the CPA. They've mulled over this. They spent a lot of time thinking about it, trying to figure it out. For some reason, all of them sat around for weeks and decided that this was the project they really felt like they wanted to support, or at least one of them. But, um, Counselor McGrath Smith said that this was the most highly recommended project from the CPA. So I think it's interesting that this is the most controversial one here. Um, as far as smaller grants, uh, CDBG gives out smaller grants. They just, um, got funding for, um, one of the offices to do like $30,000 loans. I think it's like 30, $30,000 loans for like, uh, two-family houses and such, um, that can be applied for. So the things that were brought up are being covered by other funding sources. Again, people have to apply for them. It's our jobs to let people know about these funding sources so that we can help constituents if they, if they meet these, you know, criteria, we can help them find the resources, we can help them apply. So sitting here and talking about who should have applied, who didn't, is a moot point because they didn't apply, so they didn't qualify. There'll be another round next year, they can apply then. Um, I'm still going to support this because I firmly believe that Hoyok needs some wins and I want the city to be able to say, yeah, we helped develop that project. We not only invited them in to redo a building with their $55 million, um, but we supported the project while, while it was here, even though we could only put in 200 grand, um, which is a drop in the bucket for such a big company. But I think the stamp of Hoyok on things is really important. This is our city and it's nice for people to come in and take over and build things and rebuild things. But at the end of the day, we want to have some credit for this too. And it's going to do wonders for our elderly community and I think we need to stand behind it. Thanks.
Thank you. On the motion? Uh, uh, I had Counselor Greeney and then on the motion.
And just quickly, I'm one of the, uh, the possible people who would take advantage of such a situation. Number two, when the marijuana industry came into Hoyok, I voted no on every single one because I never got a study from the medical people on the effects of marijuana on our youth or anything else. And I had it in public safety for three years. Number three, let's move the question and get the vote over with.
Awesome. Great. Thank you. Um, so, uh, the motion was to pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
Is there a motion to pass the second reading?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Great. And, uh, motion passed the second reading, the clerk will call the roll. If you're voting.
What is the motion?
If this is specifically that you, if you vote yes, which I was just going to say, if you vote yes, you're voting to approve?
200,000.
200,000. For the?
Wind Development.
Wind Development, Appleton Mill project. So a yes vote means you approve the request and a no vote means you are voting to deny.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Sullivan?
No.
Bacon?
No.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
No.
Devine?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Rainey?
No.
Jordane?
No.
McGrath Smith?
Yes.
Raffi Rumbelotti?
Yes.
Macasio?
No.
Israel Rivera? Israel Rivera? Seven yeas, six nays.
So with that, the motion, or the, uh, project has been approved. I believe we need seven votes for CPA.
That's right.
Thank you. Item number 19, uh, the Committee on Finance, to whom an order was referred, that the DPW and mayor consider repainting the sidewalk and tree belt approximate to 548 South Street, send a copy to Finance, request appropriation from mayor if this order makes sense, recommended that the order be referred to the mayor. Counselor Devine?
Um, make a motion that the order's been complied with.
Uh, under, well, under discussion, uh, Counselor, well, Counselor Devine, do you wanna give your update from?
Well, it, this was, this was a copy to Finance. It wasn't the original, I don't believe, because it was, uh, I wanna say 2022, maybe? Um, and all we did was refer to the mayor, so make a motion to pass the first reading.
Okay, Counselor, well, I don't know if we need to do that, but Counselor Jordane?
Yeah, Madam President, I would recommend that we just adopt the committee report, I don't know readings, and then just send this to the mayor. It hasn't been complied with, I think that's the point, it hasn't been complied with. And, um, I'll let Counselor, uh, Bartley speak to this, but I'll certainly, just as a person who also represents Ward Three, I'm very concerned to have this area in front of, uh, the Taino Restaurant fixed. Um, we talk about perfect timing, I don't know if we should have queued our special guest here from earlier today talking about how there's a special partnership with Taino, and they're getting, uh, certain, uh, funds to provide, uh, meals to the seniors at Elmwood Towers and otherwise. The area needs to be fixed in front of the restaurant, and that's what these funds are for. So, uh, this funding request, so we would encourage the mayor to approve this and to fund this so that these improvements could be made, and it would be safer for the seniors. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Counselor Bartley?
I I appreciate the Finance Committee's good work on this, and, uh, we'll send it to the mayor and see what they, see what the mayor has to have to say. I just wanna make one just, uh, side point relative to what Kevin just raised. It's it's related to to this order. Uh, when Brenda was here speaking before us, what she didn't say is, is that their their company is willing to possibly even front the money, uh, for the, for the crosswalk, just to help the seniors get over to the, to the bodegas there, it's a wonderful place, and then, and then across the street, there's a, there's a church so they can celebrate their faith, and just up the road, Taino, which is, which is, he's got this great program to to give severely discounted meals, um, to 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 those that are deserving. And we're just looking to get, get 11,000 for a crosswalk, we get a blinking light now for, since December.
Thank you.
And so this is kind of a, actually, it's kind of a serendipitous, it kinda happened at the same time as this meeting, but to fix this little area, there's, there's a, there's a couple there that, uh, they they rent, they're both from Connecticut, and the, uh, property owner has done a great job and fixed up the building, but the the business owners really have done yeoman work. So this would be a, a small fee to sort of say, hey, the city wants to fix and prove the sidewalks for, to dress up the neighborhood, but also to support this business that's really turning around and on its own initiative, supporting the city of Holyoke. So it's something I hope that the mayor can come back with a financial transfer, maybe we can figure it out.
Thank you. Counselor Rivera?
Um, I echo the sentiment, um, Taino Restaurant, um, I go there, my mother-in-law actually utilizes the services, uh, she takes my granddaughters there on a regular basis. Um, I, I would, I would, I would be in favor for this, too, as well, and hope it does happen, but I I would just like to reiterate again, and I will continue to reiterate moving forward, every time there's a project like this, that's $11,000 for the light, there's whatever amount of money is gonna be for that sidewalk, as well as whatever we do approve if we get the speed bumps on Laurel Street, um, just so that we can pay attention to where dollars are being spent in our community, because it needs to be fair across the whole city.
Thank you, Counselor. All right, um, on the motion, uh, to just refer to the mayor, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So moved, all right. We're heading into motions, orders, and resolutions, and we're doing good on time, so I'm just gonna remind everyone that if it's going to committee, we don't need to discuss it, and I appreciate that. Um, all right. Okay, uh, item 20, filed by Counselor Givner, order that the DPW install a handicap sign at 199 Beach Street, uh, ordinance?
And a copy to disabilities.
Ordinance and a copy to disabilities, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? So moved. Um, item 21, filed by Counselor McGrath Smith, order that the city ordinance section 7434 be revised to remove, um, number two, any entity that does not receive city solid waste collection services will be exempt from this section if they can prove that the cost of implementing such a plan over a 12-month period will cost more than the current solid waste removal plan. Uh, ordinance?
You received and sent to ordinance?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Uh, item 22, filed by Counselor Ocasio, order that the DPW install a handicap sign at 624 Southeast Street, number 202, um, ordinance?
Ordinance with a copy to disabilities.
Ordinance with a copy to disabilities, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Item 20, oh, I think I just?
23.
23. Right, okay. Item 23, uh, also filed by Counselor Ocasio, order that the DPW install a sign at the entrance to Hoyoke coming north on Route Five that notifies drivers not to use air brakes unless emergency. Where'd you like this sent?
I would say receive and adopt.
Okay, uh, receive and adopt.
And I believe we've already had it, uh, we had already adopted something similar to this already to put this at the entrances. I don't know if the signs never got put up or what, but the council has already adopted this previously, just so we're all aware.
All right, so, uh, Counselor Rivera?
I remember filing an order on this and getting laughed at, but it's whatever.
All right, great. Moving on, you weren't, okay, we're gonna keep going. Uh, item 24?
So we adopted that and sent to?
Received. Received and sent to DPW. All those in favor? Aye? Any opposed? So moved. All right, item 24, um, filed by Counselor Ocasio, order that the school department provide a crossing guard at the corner of South Bridge Street and Sergeant Street to protect children and families crossing the street, coming to and from Morgan School. This is a very dangerous situation that needs immediate attention.
You received and sent to?
Joint committee.
Joint committee?
Yeah, I would say, uh, a copy to the, uh, school receiver plus a copy to the joint committee. Would that sound good, Carmen? I was, I was saying we could send it to Mr. Soto, and then also we'll send a copy to the, uh, joint committee of the City Council and School Committee for follow-up.
Great. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Oh, sorry.
And the police department.
And the police department.
Oh, and police, okay.
Thank you. Okie doke. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? So moved. Uh, 25, filed by Counselor Ocasio, order that a don't block the driveway sign be installed at Elliot Place on Main Street.
Receive, adopt, refer to DPW?
Receive, adopt, and send to DPW. All those in favor?
Aye.
Under discussion?
No, it's already an ordinance, you're not legally allowed to block driveways anyways, so. Just put up the sign.
All right, so we'll send that to DPW. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. 26, filed by, uh, Counselor Ocasio, order that all the money meters throughout Hoyoke, uh, to be checked to see if they're broken or just need to change a battery.
You received and sent to the DPW?
Receive and send to DPW. All those in favor? Uh, sorry?
This is a discussion, and I think we have a late file for the, for the parking study, so I thought we could maybe just suspend rules and just receive that one. And then I just wanna point out that, I hope you noticed all the new meter heads that are, that have been installed. I mean, they put in dozens and dozens of them, I hope, I hope you noticed.
Yeah.
And, uh, A, it looks a lot better, and B, I hope that it has, uh, intended effect, but we shall, we shall see. That's something perhaps we should, hopefully we'll get some reports over the course of time from, uh, Public Works and the mayor's office on that.
All right, so?
Why don't we just take up that late file now and just receive it, if you want, but if you don't, that's okay.
Okay. So, uh, motion's been made and seconded, well? This, yeah, sorry, this is when I get a little confused, okay. Um, so motion's been made and seconded to take item 26 and late file item B, uh, receive, adopt, send to, where do you want this?
Uh, 26 goes to DPW, I think, uh, the counselor mentioned that one, and then, uh, the other one goes to, uh, DGR for probably a, a discussion.
Okay, so, um, to DPW, and then the parking study to DGR. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? So moved. Put that down there. Moving forward, uh, item 27, uh, filed by Counselor Ocasio, order that the, uh, that the speedhumps in front of Dean's School and raised crosswalks be repainted yellow to help distinguish them from the roadway to improve safety and effectiveness.
You received and sent to W?
Nope, receive, adopt, send to the DPW.
Receive, adopt, and send to DPW. All those in favor? Aye?
Can I just add my name to that, because that's something I wanna see a few, a few other?
Yep.
Streets do that, I think that's a great idea.
No problem. Okay. Uh, yes.
Yeah, could, could we, uh, revisit number 23 for just a minute? Sure.
Uh, motion reconsider, uh, agenda item 23.
Uh, motion has been made and seconded to reconsider 23, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item 23, go ahead.
That would just make a friendly amendment to change it from air brakes to engine brakes.
Oh, yes, we had that conversation, too, the last time.
That's right.
I'll second that.
Yep. All those in favor? Aye? Any opposed?
The motion to approve is amended.
And?
Send to DPW.
And send to DPW. All those in favor? Aye? Any opposed? So moved. All right. 28, uh, filed by counselors Bartley, Rivera, and Sullivan, DPW install a stop sign at Charles Street where it intersects Laurel Street.
Yeah, motion to, uh, re- receive, adopt, and refer, and, uh, just to, um, uh, send a, send a copy of that one to Public Safety just to follow up with it in 45 days.
Okay. So motion has been made to receive, adopt, refer to DPW, and follow up with our administrative assistant in 45 days. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? So moved. Item 29, filed by counselors Bartley, Sullivan, and Rivera, uh, Hoyoke Police enforce the stop sign at Brown Ave and Laurel Street, receive, adopt, refer to police department?
Yeah, so moved, and then, uh, as I was writing it, just send a, send to Public Safety to follow up with, uh, get the, have the police come in in a couple months, maybe Captain Cruz can give us a update on what's been going on there.
Okay.
This came out of the meeting from the other night, and we just, a lot of constituents are very concerned about, uh, public safety in that intersection.
Thank you. So motion's been made, seconded to refer to police and send to Public Safety. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right? Any opposed? So moved. Okay. Those two. All right, item 29, nope, 30, uh, filed by Bartley and Counselor Rivera, uh, DPW install a warning sign to motorists of three-way stop signs at Charles Street and Washington Ave. Counselor Bartley?
Yeah, motions to receive, adopt, refer to DPW, and send it, send a copy to Public Safety to see if, just to make sure that, uh, we don't need an ordinance change or anything, they just put, put up the signage. Again, this came from that same meeting, just a lot of concerns from, uh, Washington Ave, uh, residents, Charles residents, Laurel residents, relative to public safety around that relatively new three-way stop sign.
Thank you. Uh, all those in favor, oh, sorry.
Just to add, yeah, a lot, a lot of constituents are concerned and, and requesting that police have a heavier presence as well. They're, they, they also wanted to know why police are not actually doing traffic work. So, um, ideally, I think that something should be said to the effect of the traffic squad and making sure that something like that does get into process in place, so that way we don't just have little updates, they can actually have operations that are kind of preventing things like this from happening.
Counselor, look at 31, we're, we're getting there.
No, we, I, no, I've been fighting this fight for two years now, so yeah, hopefully it doesn't take that much longer.
Look at us all go. Love it. All right.
So do we vote on that?
Uh, no, we haven't, so that's gonna go to Public Safety, um, and refer to DPW. Um, all those in favor? Aye? Any opposed? So moved. Um, all right, so item 31 is filed by counselors Bartley, Sullivan, and Rivera, um, have the police advise on the status of a formation of a traffic bureau and a code enforcement.
This one, um, certainly is to receive, adopt, and refer a copy to HPD, the mayor, and certainly have, set something up in, in Public Safety. Uh, this, again, came from the same meeting, just following what the gentleman just said a moment ago. It basically arose out of that meeting and from, uh, ordinance and?
Great.
I mean, you, you heard what he said, so hopefully we can have a little conversation.
Okay, so send to Public Safety and, uh, copy to police, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
One quick comment?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I just, I also did wanna point out, please take notice of the ordinance that we have on this. We have an ordinance that has various requirements relative to a traffic department, still not being enforced, and this has been pointed out for years.
Thank you. Um?
Thank you, Kev.
All right, 32, uh, filed by Bartley, Rivera, and Sullivan, uh, the mayor and DPW?
Already did that.
We did that one.
Oh, sorry.
Got one, 33.
Oh, yeah, you're right. Great. 33, filed by Counselor Bartley, uh, the fencing around Fitzpatrick Rink, especially along the north side of Parento Drive, is disgraceful and in desperate need of repair. Please notice the glorious Commonwealth of Massachusetts and the vendor operating the rink. The vendor, to its credit, has done great work, uh, to repair the fence along South Elm Street, refer to, uh, DCR, and the vendor for the rink, Representative Duffy, with a copy of Public Safety to follow up on this, um?
And amend it to include Senator Velez as well, please.
Add Senator Velez. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? So moved. Okay. 34, uh, planning, oh, we did?
Yeah.
We did that, we did that, you're right, thanks. Item 35, filed by Counselor Bartley, DPW conduct the following on the Wayfinder signs in Smith's Ferry, fix the damaged Country Club sign on the southbound side of Route Five, and install a new sign on the northbound side of Route Five as it's been missing now for a few years.
Yeah, I just, I just wanna make, uh, receive, adopt, and refer, I just wanna make one quick comment on that.
Sure.
Uh, and I do apologize to Meg, I, I, I try my best to, to reach out to other counselors when I, when I file orders in their wards, and I didn't do that for these, these couple, and I didn't do that for these, these couple, because like, I kind of got rushed. But normally I would do that to file, uh, co-file with the board councillors. So I kind of apologized for, for that, but I got really rushed on uh, Thursday. I forgot the deadline was.
That early deadline comes out quick, I know.
It's, it's.
It does, yeah.
So, uh, so that was that. You can, you can ask Brenna. I think I did it twenty minutes beforehand. So anyway, that was uh, that, that's the reason there. But these are just um, those blue signs and, and we make our own signs as we know, so I, I, I don't, I mean, this has been like this for ten, ten, twelve years. I mean, go fix the signs, guys, and go replace someone that's been missing for ten years. I, I don't know why this is hard. So, but we got an order and uh, if we could just uh, send it to DPW and follow up with public safety in a couple months.
All right, thank you. Uh, receive, adopt, refer to DPW and public safety. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed?
Aye.
So uh, item thirty-six is filed by Councillors Bartley and Bacon. DPW remove the broken metal pole protruding from the tree belt near the Shell Station on Whiting Farms Road.
Receive, adopt, motions, receive, adopt and refer to DPW.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? So moved. Item thirty-seven is uh, filed by Counselor Bartley. DPW repair the Hampshire Street sign located at the corner of Pine Street. Sign is damaged.
Yeah, we received, I wish I could spell, so just put, make sure to put the P in there and then uh, that's my fault and then.
No problem.
Receive, adopt and refer. Just, the, the sign's almost uh, parallel with the ground, so they got to fix the sign.
Okay. Uh, receive, adopt and refer to DPW and copy to public safety. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
So moved. All right, um. Uh, item thirty-eight filed by Counselor Devine ordered that there be.
Can we package those?
Sure, I'm open to anything. Um.
You want to do thirty-eight and thirty, thirty-nine?
Could we read them first?
Yes, we can read them first.
Thank you.
I will do that. Okay. So motion's been made and seconded to suspend the rules and take up items thirty-eight and thirty-nine. Thirty-eight is filed by Counselor Devine. Order that there be appropriated by transfer um, two thousand four hundred fifty-seven dollars and twenty-two cents as follows, um, from firefighter to injured on duty. And item thirty-nine, also filed by Counselor Devine, is a transfer for twenty-three thousand seven hundred ninety-seven and twenty dollars from sergeants and patrolmen to injured on duty. And I will just let folks know, my notes here say the first one for the firefighter is for one.
Excuse me?
Uh, are we good?
Yeah.
Sorry, I, I, I get distracted up here. Um, the firefighter is just one. And then for the other one, it's nine officers. So I know that folks like to know that information. Counselor Devine?
Suspend the rules and pass the first reading on both of those.
Motion has been made to pass the first reading, uh, under discussion? All those in favor, sorry?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Um, mo, is there a motion to pass the second reading?
Reading.
Uh, anyone else? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Or, sorry, the motion, the clerk will call the roll. Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes. Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Rainey?
Yes.
Jordane?
Yes.
McGrath Smith?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
Yes.
Ocasio?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Unanimous vote. Thank you. Um, item forty filed by Counselor Devine. Uh, order that there be a transfer of thirty-two thousand nine hundred seventy-five as follows, from capital stabilization to recreation capital outlay vehicles.
Received and sent to finance?
To finance. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? So moved. Item forty-one.
Forty-one through forty-five, can we package them?
So motion to suspend the rules and take items forty-one through forty-five as a package. All those in favor? Aye? I'll read them briefly. Uh. Forty-one, um, uh, eighty thousand dollars, eighty thousand one hundred sixty dollars transfer from capital stabilization to the fire department. Um, forty-two is uh, twenty-five thousand dollar transfer from Sanitarian two, three and one floating clerk to special counsel and professional services. Forty-three is uh, that five million dollars is appropriated for the purpose of financing the demolition, remodeling, reconstruction, engineering, construction and equipping or re-equipping of various city parking facilities, including the payment of costs incidental or related thereto. Um, to meet this appropriation with the uh, uh, the treasurer with the approval of the mayor is authorized to borrow said amount. Forty-four is uh, that the city council accept the provisions of the Mass DEP Fiscal Twenty-four Sewage Notification Assistance Grant for fifty thousand, no match. And forty-five is uh, order that the amount of one thousand nine hundred fifty dollars be authorized from the computer department's software license usages fees for services rendered in fiscal year twenty twenty-three, which were encumbered at the twenty twenty-three fiscal year end.
Received and sent to finance?
Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Item forty-six filed by Counselor Devine. Order that handicap access ramp from City Hall Parking Dock into City Hall be replaced as finances allow.
Received and sent to the.
You want to sign on to that? Sure.
Forty was sent to financed, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Sorry, Counselor?
Okay, I was just going to send it to DPW, but.
Okay.
Finance is fine as well.
Let's see. Let me just make sure I don't miss Counselor Greeney. Which one, I'm sorry?
Forty-six.
Four, okay. There we go. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? So moved. Item forty-seven filed by Counselor Devine. That City Council Rule Nine under sub, under Committee's Section P be amended to change forty-five days to sixty days. The new language would say all orders sent to any subcommittee be acted upon. Taken up, not disposed of within sixty days shall be deemed tabled. Charter and rules?
Charter and rules.
Charter and rules.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? So moved. We're almost done. We have some late files.
Sorry. It was my fault.
Okay. Um, late file A filed by Counselor Devine. Um, ordered that the recent vote by the city council to keep the CPA at one point five be rescinded and a new vote be taken to reduce the CPA tax to one point oh and be placed on November ballot.
Finance?
Finance?
Finance.
All those in favor? Aye? Any opposed? So moved. Um, we already did late file B. Late file C filed by Counselor Bartley. DPW consider resurfacing the roadbed on Woodland Street. Multiple constituents and their letter carrier are requesting. Receive and refer to DPW, public safety and the mayor.
Uh, so moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion to suspend the rules to take final action and refer it, receive, adopt, refer to the DPW, public safety and the mayor. Just, just.
Okay.
Second.
The formality.
I got you. That's.
You know what I'm saying?
I, I.
Skipping it on the.
I'm into it. I love, I love formalities and Robert's rules and all that good stuff. All right. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Um, and late file D is filed by Counselor Bartley. DPW city engineer, please consider providing suggestions on entering Westfield Road from Woodland Street and Hitchcock Street. Mayors have been previously suggested and dismissed, so please provide an alternative solution. These are constituent requests. Receive.